I recognize the Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning, and good morning, everyone. I move that we adopt this session agenda dated October 1st, 2012.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Can I ask Senator Munia Barnes if he can lead us in prayer?
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, as we gather this morning to deliberate on a bill that would have probably affect not all our people of Guam, but the majority of our people of Guam who are working, we ask that you bestow your many blessings upon us as policies, as your policy-maker, as we continue to provide what's best for our people, and that we continue to press upon your will and the graces that you bestow upon us. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Palacios, if you can lead us in the recitation of the Inifresi.
Inifresi. Giri ni mostat kilu, gi hinasoku. Imostat kalun, gi kurasonku. Jany masfigu, nanina sinyahu. Ufresin maissadu, para baihu protehi. Janu difendi, ihinengi. Ikutura, ilinguahi. Iari, ihanum. Jani tanucamoru. Ni irinshoku, giretsu giri nasju stota. Esti uafitmah, gi ilu ibiblia. Jani bandirahu, ibandiran Guan.
Thank you, Senator, and I would like to ask Senator Monet Tyhren if he can lead us in the Penoghi Chamoroh, and Senator Mabini with the National Anthem.
Penoghi Chamoroh. Uri tanosta. Kontray matu naña, vitodu idugol. Para ionra. Para igloria. Abiba iisla senpara. Para ionra. Para igloria. Abiba iisla senpara. Todu idenku ipas para hita. Zandilani ntna bendishon. Kontray peligru. Na fan safu ham. Juus protehi islan guan. Kontray peligru. Na fan safu ham. Juus protehi islan guan. Can you see by the dawn of early night? What so proudly we hailed? And the twilight last gazing? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bonverse pink in the air, gave proof to the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the clerks to please take both hands.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respechel. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyhren. Speaker Wampat. And Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Speaker, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the legislative journal dated 9/2512 to 9/2612, subject to correction.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to this session journal.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imago and Guan, and I move for the same.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as there are reports of standing committees, and I move that these reports be appended to this session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees. So on item 12, Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number 518 be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as Resolution Number 520-31COR to Resolution Number 539-3OR also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as Certificate Number 167-31 be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion is any bill, sorry, any resolution or certificate of condolence or congratulatory in nature that's introduced for the duration of this session date be adopted, that all members be cosponsors, and that the sponsor of these resolutions or certificates of commendation or condolences be vetted through the legal counsel and clerk's office.
Objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my next motion is to place Bill Number 513-31, introduced by D.C. Panglinen, D.G. Rodriguez Jr., J.T. Wampat, B.J.F. Cruz, T.R. Munia Barnes, myself, R.J. Respechel, J.P. Guthertz, T.C. Ada, S. Mabini, A.B. Palacios Sr., and A.A. Yamashita, an act to provide health insurance to government of Guam employees and retirees for fiscal year 2013.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Okay, Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed to the second reading, fine.
Second reading. Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized, Senator Bill 513.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to move that the Bill Number 513, as substituted by the committee and reported out of the Committee on Appropriations, be accepted. That was filed in the committee report that was filed earlier. There was no, the, a request for the fiscal note was sent to BBMR, and we're still pending the receipt of that committee report, but I would like to move that we accept that bill and that committee report pending the receipt of the fiscal note. So I don't believe they copied Bill, the substitute version, would like to request that that, we take a short recess and copy the Bill 513 as substituted, so that we can pass it out to the members.
We're going to take a brief recess.
The legislature is back in session. Speaker Franklin, you're ready.
Thank you, and so this is Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I was stating earlier, the committee had requested, of course, the fiscal note from BBMR, and we were hoping that because of the subject matter in which it would have... The bill proposes to reduce government expenditures and government spending and save the people of Guam some money, that we would have gotten the fiscal note in an expeditious manner. Unfortunately, they have not responded, and we proceeded with the hearing. We received testimony from the BBMR, I mean, from DOA Director. So, they're very much aware. And so, any fiscal impact that may have... That this bill may have is addressed, I think, in those testimonies. But even... But regardless of that, Madam Speaker, the Fiscal Accountability Act of 1999 allows the Chairman of the Committee with Juris... The Standing Committee of Jurisdiction over the Bill to waive a... To waive a fiscal note. And so, I will provide that... I'm providing that certification, Madam Speaker, to waive the fiscal note requirement. The fiscal note is meant to, of course, advise the body of the impact. And in most sense, and really, it's the increased costs that a bill would have. And it's very clear from the bill that has been introduced, if you read the bill, that the impact on this is a reduction in the expenditure. So, there is no negative impact on the... On the coffers of the government of Guam. There is a funding source for this. It's from the current funding for health insurance. So, there's no question of whether or not we're providing any unfunded mandate with this bill to the administration. We are, in fact, again, reducing their costs. So, once again, Madam Speaker, I move... I reiterate my motion that Bill Number 513-31COR is substituted by Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Bank... Public Debt Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be accepted.
Hearing objections? Senator Frank Glosz?
No objection to the... To the...
To the motion?
To the motion, but, on the... Carry it up, please, but I'd like to be able to see the waiver.
I'm sorry?
The waiver?
Oh, yes.
The fiscal note waiver, okay?
Yes. Hearing objections or...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 513-31COR substituted by Committee on Appropriations be placed in the third reading front. I'd like to discuss the bill briefly, Madam Speaker.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this body, along with the Governor of Guam, continues to understand the challenges that are facing our government and our people. And one of the challenges, of course, that is on everybody's mind is, what are we going to do about the financial needs of this government to provide the service to the people? And how are we going to deal with those challenges, Madam Speaker? And on one day, we can talk about how are we going to handle it through the budget process? And we have done that, Madam Speaker, with regards to the actions that this body has taken and has supported. And that is through the budget bill that was passed. We accepted a budget with a revenue number that was developed by the Governor, approved by the Special Economic Service Group, and adopted that number. So, we're pretty confident that, you know, it has had quite an extensive review to validate the assumptions based upon that revenue number. And so, we moved forward with that, Madam Speaker. We then took that number and said, these are our obligations. The first obligation that this body looked at was refunds. What is going to be our obligation to pay the people of Guam their tax refunds from the money we collect in this fiscal year? And this body moved forward, Madam Speaker, and the first thing we did was set aside the provision for refunds at $100 million based upon this recommendation and the certification by the BBMR Director, Director of Administration, and, of course, Director of Revenue and Taxation. So, this body provided that as a first step in addressing the financial challenges of this government and getting the money of the tax refunds back to the people. We set that aside, then we set aside our debt service payments for all the bonds and all the borrowing that we have obligations to, Madam Speaker. And then, we moved it to the operational side. Took a look at what we were using today to run the operations of this government, Madam Speaker. Took a look at the 15% reserve that the Governor had imposed and where we were actually able to realize those savings. And then, we allocated those expenditures, Madam Speaker, to the services that our people expect from the Departments and Agencies of this government. And then, we said, we've got to tighten our belts. So, this body then looked at that, allocated the expenditures, and said, we've still got to reduce some more. And so, we gave the Governor the greatest flexibility available to any Governor, really, in a very, very long time, in saying, here's our allocations, but these are guidelines. And so, we need to reduce $14 million more in order to ensure that we don't overspend and we're able to meet the obligations for current operating expenditures. And with these reductions in expenditures, be able to meet and pay off our deficit, Madam Speaker, our prior year obligations, our continuing obligations, and so forth. And we did that, and that's one way. And so, this body, Madam Speaker, actually provided over $14 million in cuts and reductions in cost of running our government, meeting and helping the Governor and the administration reach its ultimate goal of whatever that number is that they want to save. And it could be 75 million, it could be 100 million that the Governor wants to save with changes in the operational structure of this government. But we're contributing $14 million in identified savings in that area. And then, we even went more, Madam Speaker. When we got additional revenue, we then said, we know that one of the prior year obligations is still the past due refunds. That not only do we have obligations for FY 2012 tax years refund that we're going to start paying in next fiscal year, in this budget cycle, we said that we got additional money, and we threw that back into savings to address the prior year tax refunds. We did that with the $14 million, the savings. We did that with the additional money from the Section 30 that came in after the budget was passed. So, this body has continually moved and looked at ways to do so. And when we switch the discussion from budgets, as sometimes the Governor likes to do, from budgeting to cash, we still are looking to cooperate and do that. And this, Madam Speaker, Bill 513, really also addresses the Governor's concern of the cash needs of this government. And how can we reduce the cash outlay of this government so that we can take those cash savings for the obligations to ensure that we have money for other needs of this government, whether they be back to more refunds or we put them back into the pockets of our consumers and our government employees for the services? And what are the reductions? And so, if we're going to switch the subject from appropriations and revenues to cash, Bill 513 does that, Madam Speaker. As you know, Madam Speaker, the government of Guam is in the midst of, of course, extending the contract because of the protest that's been filed with regards to health insurance costs for the government of Guam, the people of Guam, and the employees of the government of Guam, and the retirees of the government of Guam. And so, we know that every month, we have to have cash to pay out these health insurance premiums. As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, we actually, according to the administration, had to borrow $18 million last year in cash so that we can use that $18 million in cash borrowing to pay the income... The health insurance premiums. So, how do we reduce the need? Because, Madam Speaker, we know from the changes that this body has made in the information required to guide the administration in the procurement of health insurance, that the information and the data that is being provided have proven to us over the last two years that we're paying out more cash than we need to every year for the cost of that health insurance. We paid out over $22 million in cash the year before that was over and above the cost of the health insurance, but not only over and above the cost of the claims and the services provided to the employee, but $22 million over and above the cost after providing 15% for administration and profit to the health insurance company. It's not $22 million over and above the claims filed by the doctors and the hospitals. It's $22 million over and above claims and payments to hospitals and doctors, and 15% for profit and retention by the health insurance company. So, what we did in the year before, Madam Speaker, was we actually through the process of the implementation of the Obamacare Act, the PACA Act, Patient Protection Act, we were able to get back $10 million in cash of that overpayment, and we actually increased the benefits a little bit by a value of $11 million. So, we got more healthcare, but it cost, you know, in exchange for, rather than giving us back 11 million, we said, give us more benefits. So, we saved 20... We saved... We overpaid by 22. We took 11 and more benefits, and we got $10 million cash back. This year, Madam Speaker, to validate the fact... Validate, rather, the fact that we have continued to leave money on the table, if you want to call it that, during the negotiation process, Madam Speaker, again, once again, as we know from the provision in the budget that was put in there by Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, that this MLR, the 2027/28 section of the patient... I think that's the correct section number. But the MLR provision, that once again, we're getting back, and we have, you know, close to $10 million in rebates again because we overpaid in cash in that fiscal year. Once that was reconciled, we're getting it back. And so, Madam Speaker, this bill will stop the cash bleed, you might want to say, of overpaying for health insurance by right... By bringing the premium in line with the actual claims data experience, inclusive of the 15% retention for the health insurance companies to make their profit and pay their administrative expenses. And so, that really, Madam Speaker, is what Bill 513 wants to achieve. First and foremost, Madam Speaker, is that it solves a problem that we have with the scarcity of cash, that there is no need for us to overpay in cash to the health insurance company and then wait six months after the end of the contract year to get that money back. We can't afford to overpay that cash any longer as the Governor has so vehemently pointed out. We have a cash shortfall. So, why would it make sense that we continue moving down in the procurement of health insurance that ensures that we have more outlay of cash than is required to pay for the services that are being provided to us by the health insurance company? So, this bill, Madam Speaker, building on the claims data that we all have, the most current data, sets a cap on how much that cash payout be... Shall be for this fiscal year in the procurement of a new contract for health insurance. And so, the bill sets that up, and it caps the premium base. And then, we'll reconcile in the end. But it does recognize that we've been overpaying in cash and getting it back later. And so, it reduces the cash outlay for this fiscal year to 69 million approximately from the 74 that we currently have, proceeding with the current contract and the extension of this contract. the current contract and the extension of this contract for the procurement of health insurance. So it stops the cash bleeding. Secondly, Madam Speaker, this bill sets up a process that kinda ensures that we don't go back to the same process that has locked us into this contract extension that continues that outlay of cash. Because what it does, Madam Speaker, is that, as you know, in this procurement process through the RFP process, we've had three protests filed by three different companies about how the procurement has proceeded under the current RFP process. And so we can't afford to go back into that same process once we resolve any of these protests, because we're gonna go right back into that protest process. If not, the way that the situation is proceeding is that they're gonna go back to the RFP, make all these changes that could take months, which means it locks us into this process that continues to bleed us some cash, Madam Speaker. And so what bill does, and prevents, prevents, I think, the expedition, expediting, the policy that this legislature wanted to do in giving the GovGuam employee a choice in who they want to be insured with. So it opens up the field to competition, and if everyone agrees, competition should drive down costs, and that that competition would allow savings to the government of Guam and the employees of the government of Guam. So Bill 513 then moves in that direction, Madam Speaker, and it takes two elements of the federal health employees program of how they procure health insurance. It does not mirror, it is not exactly like it. The two elements that are most, you know, obvious and prevalent in the federal health insurance program is a qualification process and a bidding process. And so Bill 513 takes that same elements and shortens it for the timeframes available to us. So we know that we've had, under the RFP process, bidders for that that have been qualified already. So what we've done, Madam Speaker, is set up a qualification criteria for companies so that we know that they're gonna be able to provide the service that they promised, pay the bills that they obligate themselves to in accepting enrollment, and put into play an evaluation process that is very, very objective, Madam Speaker, in terms of the prices and the price points. So we know that, and we have put in the bill that the insurance commissioner reviews the products, reviews the financial stability of these companies bidding. We know that they're stable, because three of the companies that bitted the last time, which we expect that they will participate in this process, already are providing and have been accepted by the federal employees' health benefits program to provide healthcare insurance services for their employees. They're qualified, they meet the criteria. And so, you know, in addition to requiring our insurance commissioner to continue to be involved in the certification of that process, we know that the federal government has reviewed them. And so, Madam Speaker, it allows then the companies to be qualified, pre-qualified, they submit their bid, if they meet the pricing requirement with the premium cap that we've set, then they're able to then participate and be awarded a contract. Now, Madam Speaker, what kind of savings are we talking about? Under the cap of the premiums based upon experience that we've rated of the claims that have been filed, plus the retention levels and the rebates that have been given, Madam Speaker, Bill 513 will provide, there's only, will have the same benefit schedule that the employees have today. So it doesn't change the benefit schedule, and it doesn't change any of those matters, Madam Speaker. So we know we're dealing with apples and apples when comparing claims data and so forth. So if you were an employee, Madam Speaker, and the two plans are the SC 1500 plan that everybody will be bidding on, and the HSA 2000 plan, if you were an active employee and a subscriber, Madam Speaker, and you are now in the 2000 plan, your savings could possibly be, Madam Speaker, over $843 a year. That's a lot of money, that means a lot to individuals, Madam Speaker, in our community. And if you were in the 1500 plan, and the reason why there's such a difference is the benefits levels are different in each, but if you were a current SC 1500, your savings could be $169. If you were a subscriber and a spouse, your possible savings over the HSA 2000 could be $1700, and almost 500, 449 if you were in the 1500. Subscriber and children, so the families, Madam Speaker, could also save $1700 a year, and $277 under the 1500 program, 1700 being under the 2000 plan. If you were a subscriber and family, $1800, Madam Speaker, for the 2590. And this is based upon how you would calculate the premiums based upon how the bid is structured, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, our retirees are faced every single day with challenges for the cash needs. So what this does, it also puts money back into the pockets every single month, every single paycheck, because they don't have to pay the current rate that we are, that we will be charged under the current extension, and then have to wait for their money, Madam Speaker. So a subscriber, retiree, only would save close to $867 under the 2000 plan, and 434 under the 1500 plan. A subscriber and a spouse, retiree, could save $1900, and over $1,000 for the 1500 plan. Subscriber and children, $1800 versus $606 in the 1500 plan. And a subscriber and family could possibly save every single year, Madam Speaker, or in this fiscal year, rather, $2,157, and $1,325 for the 1500 plans. And this is the actual cash also, Madam Speaker, that doesn't go to the insurance company for overpayment, and then we have to wait 18 months to get it back, like the tax refunds. You know, if you actually were able to calculate your tax liability, you could have zero tax liability, get it withheld so that you don't have to wait for a refund and not overpay the government. Well, we have an opportunity to ensure that our government workers don't overpay the premium, that the government itself, for its employer, part of the contribution, doesn't overpay and then have to wait for its refund. We know, we can calculate how we can have a zero liability, Madam Speaker, for that rebate. And so this is what we're doing in this plan, and it's been developed, Madam Speaker, with some expertise for people that have been involved in the structuring of health insurance plans and underwriting health insurance plans, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other issue, of course, that maybe some are concerned with is that, you know, we have these protests ongoing. Well, Madam Speaker, what this does is that those protests affect a new RFP as they would Bill 513. The difference is, is that the new RFP does not provide for any savings. We don't know what those savings are. When we went into the negotiation process, once again, Madam Speaker, we left $10 million on the table. We weren't able to negotiate a premium structure that said, we are paying exactly what we should be paying, and instead have to wait $10 million for money to be rebated to us. That's that process that we're gonna go back to with these protests are resolved. So what this does, Madam Speaker, 513, is says, we don't need to go there, we shouldn't go there. The government can't afford to go there. We can't afford to continue to bleed that cash and bleed the employees and the retirees as well in taking cash out of their pocket, only having to wait 18 months, no interest on it, Madam Speaker, in terms of their rebate. I don't think we're getting paid interest on the rebate, even though they've had our money for $10 million of our money that they didn't use to pay any claims, over and above the claims filed, over and above the profit and administration costs that they have. They had $10 million extra, Madam Speaker. They took that money, they invested it, they made interest, but when we get a rebate, we don't get interest on that $10 million. We don't get to say, return that interest on the $10 million. No, we just get what we paid. We gotta stop that, Madam Speaker, and Bill 513 is the vehicle to do that, Madam Speaker. And I thank all of my colleagues that have taken the time to continue to look at this issue and work on it, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, this bill is subjected to the same conditions and what we need to wait in terms of resolving the protests on the cancellation of that bid. It just says that when we're ready to go out for the new RFP, when the issues related to not issuing a new RFP because of these protests are resolved, that we don't go back to the old way of overpaying an RFP process, and we go to this process in which is simplified, less subjective evaluations by that, and it guarantees a choice, Madam Speaker. If we have more than one bidder, more than one contract will be awarded, more than one opportunity, more than one company will be available for our employees to make a choice from, Madam Speaker. Now, Madam Speaker, what if we don't do, what if we pass this, Madam Speaker, and we can't move forward in this section and we have to go back to the other, then we're no better off? This does not harm that process. It provides that opportunity after resolving the issues. We've had our conversations with the Attorney General, Madam Speaker. We met with him this morning to try and ensure that he understands what we are discussing and how we're trying to proceed, and they agree. 513, if it should be passed into law, can move forward, but it has to, the issue of the protests and the cancellation has to be dealt with. We recognize that, we adhere to that, but once that's dealt with, then we move into a process that stops us bidding cash, gives a choice, puts money back into the pockets of our consumers, Madam Speaker. The cancellation of the bid and going back into the RFP process, we can't issue that bid either, Madam Speaker, until that protest is resolved. So they're both subject to not being able to move forward immediately until that issue's resolved. The difference is that if we go back into the RFP process, we know that the timelines that have been set will not allow us to be able to realize those savings, because it's going to take us too long to be able to go out for an RFP, negotiate, go back and forth before we're able to award a new contract, before we know it, it's only two months to the end of the contract. And we end up continuing to bleed cash during that whole time. Bill 513, if it's resolved within 30, 45 days, we can begin saving money, putting money back into the pockets of our consumers, Madam Speaker. We can give the consumer a choice within 45 days of resolving those issues, Madam Speaker. The other way, guaranteed, down the same path, they're even have to develop rules and regulations, because none exists for procurement under that process. How long do you think that's gonna take? It's gonna guarantee that we go to the end of the fiscal year with a contract that we know is already more than we need to be paying based upon the claims data under the same conditions, Madam Speaker. And we're gonna continue that process, and I don't think that that's what we want. We're trying to work with the governor in addressing the cash needs of this government. This actually contributes positively to reducing the cash needs of the government and puts money back into our retirees and our GovGuam workers. And when we do that, Madam Speaker, we are saving a taxpayer's money, because we don't have, we are reducing our costs for health. They pay for it in the end, Madam Speaker, through the taxes that we collect. So it will reduce and save the taxpayers' money. The benefit is, it gives the government of Guam employees a choice in procuring health insurance, and it puts money back by reduced contribution levels required, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for this body's, you know, deep consideration of this. Take a look at really what we're trying to do. I know that there may be some questions. This bill is subjected to the same issues that a new process and a new RFP will have to, and those issues all have to be resolved. We're just saying that when those issues are resolved, we move forward in the 513 of simplicity, straightforwardness, openness, fairness in the whole process, less bias, less opportunity for protest, and moving forward, I think, Madam Speaker, in awarding it. Only when we get bids that save us money. If we get bids that don't save us money, we don't go forward. We don't go forward if they can't put us, give us a bid that doesn't save us money. And so we go back to overspending on this side. But when we can move forward and they put a bid in that meets the price points here, we will save money, guaranteed, cash money, appropriation money, expenditure levels, all of those issues associated with government accounting and finance that the governor changes the subject on every time we kind of put a position on. All of those issues will be positively affected by putting in this process that is outlined in 513, Madam Speaker. So I beg my colleagues to consider the people of Guam, saving them money by reducing their costs, the retirees, putting money back into their pockets every single paycheck that gets dragged, less money for the reduced costs, Madam Speaker, and the government of Guam worker that everyone else face. So this, Madam Speaker, I believe, is something that this body can do, should do, and I believe if really are interested in helping our families, our people out there, reducing the cost of this government, and helping the administration address the cash problems that we're gonna be facing, this, Madam Speaker, answers all of those needs that we all are searching for solutions to, Madam Speaker. So I ask for my colleagues' consideration on this, and of course, of course, Madam Speaker, their positive vote on this bill. Thank you, and since this is my seat, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion? Senator Esposito, and then Senator Frank Lass.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 513-31, but more specifically, Madam Speaker, I rise to commend the sponsor of this bill and every single senator that co-sponsored this bill, because it's very clear what this bill's attempting to do. And although it may seem like it's very technical, I want to commend the retiring speaker, the former speaker from Baragada, who laid out a very complex process in very simplistic terms. And it's very simple, Madam Speaker. If you support the right of GovGuam active and retired employees to choose the health insurance plan that they want, that suits their family's needs or their individual needs, should they be single, then this is the bill that you would support. This is the bill that I support. If you support competition in this, in any kind of government contract, then this is the bill that you should support. This is the bill that I'm certainly supporting. You know, I know that there were some concerns expressed by those in the industry, Madam Speaker, and those concerns certainly are legitimate. And I know also, Madam Speaker, that those concerns were addressed in this substitute version. And if more concerns come up, then I'm sure that we can address those concerns as we move forward, but as the retiring speaker said, time is of the essence. There currently is no RFP process, so there's nothing to stand in the way right now in terms of whether or not the GovGuam employee, active or retiree, come today, whether or not they're gonna have health insurance. Certainly they are. They are, Madam Speaker, because we saw that the administration has entered into a contract with the existing health insurance provider on a basis arrangement that until such time a new RFP is executed and a new contract is awarded, then they would go with the subscriber that the government of Guam chooses through that process. But you have to stand up and ask yourself, is the current process competitive? Does the current process reflect the medical loss ratio required under the Obama Healthcare Act? And if it does, you have to ask yourself, just as I'm asking myself, then why then the administration put in $7.5 million for medical loss ratio? And so I've seen a barrage of press releases appealing to the people of Guam to talk to us members of the legislature to support the administration spending cuts plan, but I've yet to see one press release from the governor's media team asking the people of Guam to support Bill 513-31. I have yet to see one press release explaining to the people of Guam that this bill and this process outlined in 513 this process outlined in 513 will provide for that, that family's most important need, and that's being able to have access to affordable health care. And so if this bill passes, Madam Speaker, and my prayer is that it becomes law, you wouldn't have to see the government of Guam front seven and a half million dollars over the next twelve months. You're going to see that, that it's going to improve the cash flow situation that we have, and you're going to see that the government of Guam is going to be able to set out what the benefits ought to be and then make sure that those monies are available to be appropriated before the negotiation period starts. And, and one of the biggest concerns that I've raised and something that the sponsor of this bill has acknowledged is we currently have a process where the negotiating team goes in and negotiates for certain benefits, and then the legislature gets the bill in the end. I believe two insurance cycles ago, I believe that the, the costs of health care to the government of Guam increased by about twenty-seven million dollars in one, in one year, Madam Speaker, and we, we were faced with the situation of having to go and figure out how to reduce spending, how to make up for that shortfall, and where else that we can identify funds to, to cover that shortfall. And I think going forward, if not for the medical loss ratio, we would still see government of Guam being forced, forced, Madam Speaker, to appropriate upwards of seventy-five million dollars per year to cover all the Gov Guam subscribers. And so, so while some may argue, Madam Speaker, some outside this room may argue that this is, that this bill is a work in progress and needs to be improved, I certainly say that could be the case, but I think there's enough for us to go on to make sure that once this is passed and signed into law, you're going to be able to see these Gov Guam subscribers finally have a choice of what health insurance plan to go with. And, you know, this, this bill in no way points fingers at the current Gov Guam health insurance provider, and, and I want to call to the body's attention that at the public hearing, the sponsor of this bill recognizes the level of service and the commitment to that service that this current health insurance provider, and that's, that's not what this is about. What this is about is providing for the competition that even the current health insurance provider to the government of Guam recognizes is a necessary evil, and for them to acknowledge that it's necessary to have competition. But then they, they spell out some concerns, like if you allow for other healthcare providers to provide this service, they may not get enough subscribers to be able to sustain themselves for that upcoming year. And, and so what this substitute version does, it requires that anyone who's going to participate in this process make sure that they're financially viable and that their business plan is sound. And I, and I think that's a recognition by the sponsor to want to do whatever it takes to make it work. And I, I know, I know people don't like change so much, Madam Speaker, but this is the change that we need, and this is the change that we need to embrace. And, and for those of us, and for me especially, to be so concerned about the growing cost of health care and thank goodness for Obamacare, which provides for a medical loss ratio cap, I'm still concerned because the administration is still deciding whether to opt in or opt out, citing that the impact of health care under the Obama Healthcare Act to the territory of Guam is astronomical and it's not going to be funded. It's another unfunded mandate. So notwithstanding what is happening on a national level, Madam Speaker, I think it behooves us to do what we can on a local level. Certainly that's what I was elected to do, and that's my mandate, to stand up for the people of Guam in any opportunity that I see that will translate to savings for them, that will translate to existing coverage for them, and more importantly, that will translate to something that this body can do to identify cost savings, to improve the cash flow of this government of Guam. And seven and a half million dollars is significant, Madam Speaker. And, and if the administration was really looking to provide for a sixty-nine million dollar appropriation for the health insurance plan, then why then would they go back and book seven and a half million in a medical loss ratio category even after they criticized our vice speaker for saying that his calculator ran out of batteries? When Vice Speaker Cruz first pointed out, and he did the math and said, this is what the government of Guam can expect to receive, they came back and charged that his calculator malfunctioned. But then when we saw their budget submission, the very thing that a member of our body said would happen and was beat down for saying it would happen, it's reflected in the current budget bill that was introduced, not only introduced but also passed by this body. And so, so I want to move forward. I want to move forward, and I believe that Bill 513 is the way to go, and I'll just want to move forward and recognize that this is not something, this is something that people may not embrace immediately, but as we go through the discussion and as we look at this sixteen-page document together with, with its attachments, I'm hoping that the final conclusion, Madam Speaker, is that this is the way that all of us want to move forward as a body. And so I thank you for the opportunity to express my support for Bill 513-31, and my prayer that we all just listen to, to some of the concerns and that we be reassured that those concerns are adequately addressed in this substitute version. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Frank Ross, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I give my presentation, I'd like to be able to, the author can yield to a question. I know he had alluded to it earlier in his presentation, but I just, for point of clarity. And the question basically is, is the current process, procurement process that our health insurance is going through, is it, is it currently in a litigated process? Is it, is there a litigation? Is there pending?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Action pending court orders.
Yes, Madam, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the current, my understanding is that there's been multiple protests, but the protest that's moving forward is that based upon the review of all of the protests that were filed, the Gov Guam Health Insurance Negotiating Committee accepted a protest that would have a reissue, reissuance of a new RFP. So they, there was a protest filed that said, cancel the existing contract, I mean, the existing RFP in which everybody has made their submissions, cancel that and issue a new one. And so the decision made by the Gov Guam Health Negotiating Committee is, they gave notice to all of the bidders or the proposers, because it's a request for proposal, they gave notice to all four entity businesses that submitted a proposal and informed them that they were canceling the RFP in which they submitted their proposals, and they were going to issue a new RFP. And what has occurred is that one of the, the current contractor for Gov Guam Health Insurance, Select Care, who is the only one providing services at this time, protested the issuance, the cancellation and the, and the issuance of a new RFP. So they are challenging and, and appealing the decision to cancel the solicitation that is underway at all. So that is the extent of it. The, the OPA, by accepting that appeal, then as part of the automatic legislation on, on protest, that once they file an appeal, they now cannot move forward on issuing a new RFP. So that's the status of the health insurance negotiation procurement at this time. There is a stay on the issuance of a new request for proposal under the, under the cancellation decision that was issued by the Gov Guam Health Negotiating Committee.
Senator, do you?
Well, okay, so I, so right now, the process is in the OPA, it's not in the court system? So, but it, the process still provides that if an individual, if the, if the, just to complain it, for lack of a better term, if you will, is not satisfied with, or not satisfied with the, with the rulings from the OPA, there is still that process that it will go, it can go to court?
Senator, do you?
It can put a decision in court.
Do you yield to that second question?
Yes.
Yes, the current procurement appeals process provides the protester, in this case, that if they do not accept and agree with the ruling of the OPA, that they are still, they still have the avenue of filing a lawsuit within the Superior Court of Guam to appeal that decision, I guess.
And I appreciate that, Madam Speaker. And I, I needed the help, discussion to, to make sure that we understand, you know, what, what we're talking about here, and I appreciate the author who is stating that while this is an alternative and is an opportunity to be able, for us to be able to, to, to move forward on this thing, there's still that whole process that we have to go through, the process that's still available to, to the, you know, in this case, you know, Select Care. And, and along those lines, Madam Speaker, you know, I, don't get me wrong, I don't think there's anybody in this, in this body that's on this floor today that would like to see a better plan offered to, to, not, not just the government of Guam employees or its retirees, but to, to the whole people of Guam. Fortunately, our laws can't outside the bounds of, of the government of Guam. But, you know, that process, and, and I, I agree, and I appreciate that maybe we should look at other ways, other means. But my concern is whether or not this is the point in time at which we do this. My concern is that because there is still a process that is still continuing, that is ongoing, and granted that the author had stated that, you know, this will not basically take effect until that whole process has been completed, according to his conversations with the Attorney Generals this morning, that process may take us through into the next year. And, and while I appreciate, and maybe this discussion can be a, a discussion that we can have for next, next contract period, I don't know if, if it is prudent or is it wise for us to be able to do it here. Secondly, Madam Speaker, and I'm looking through the bill here, and I'm a little bit concerned as to whether or not if we're going to use this process, because this process makes, makes mention of the 2013 contract. My concern is then how is this going to affect future contracts? Does the body have to come back in later on and be able to amend that, to be able to say henceforth, this is going to be what we're going to be using henceforth? Because it just refers to 2013 contracts. Thirdly, and I'm, I'm a little confused here, because if you go to page six, line twenty-five, it starts off here, it says, "Any provision, any previous procurement solicitations for GHIP fiscal year 2013 medical and dental insurance, including GHIP procurement number DOA HRD FRP, RFP, GHI thirteen dot zero zero one, prior to enactment of this act, are hereby canceled as the effective date of this act and shall not be issued except by ITB pursuant to provisions of this act." Then you go to page twelve. And you go to line one, page twelve, "The solvency of all bidders shall be subject to the review of the Office of Banking and Insurance Commissioner, with exception of those companies who have already deemed financially sound by the Commissioner in July two thousand and twelve as part of the same procurement," but that was mentioned in page, on page six. I don't know whether there's going to be an issue here with regards to whether or not that can be accepted, because where page six says, "All previous procurement solicitations," and I'm under the assumption that on page twelve, this information provided in this RFP was as a result of a solicitation. So on page six, where we say, "Henceforth, any, all, all documents or solicitations are canceled," we're going to make reference to it and we're going to use it here. So I'm, I'm bringing up these issues as we go along, Madam Speaker, because again, my first major concern is, are we stepping into the bounds? Are we step, already in a process that is clearly and is headed and may be headed towards the, a review of the third branch of this government? Are we inserting what their authorities will be? Are we going into areas that we shouldn't be going into at this point in time? Is this a process that warrants a review with regards to how we, we obtaining health insurance for, for our employees and our retirees? But is that, can that, is that necessary to be done today? I don't believe, Madam Speaker, that based on, again, this still being the process under review, still under the, the, the current processes and the, you know, with regards to, to, to contract law, I don't know whether we're setting, we're going to be setting the, our government up again for another lawsuit based on this. So, Madam Speaker, I, I raise these points of concern, and hopefully in the continued discussions that we have, some of the issues will be answered. You know, another thing that, that was brought, Madam Speaker, is the, with the issue with concern with the MLRs, and it was the medical loss ratios, and then, you know, our government overpaying into the insurance companies, and then at the end of the year when we get our refunds, the refunds are not, you know, there's, there's, there's no interest tax to the refund. Well, maybe that's another discussion that we can have as a body, so that we can force the insurance companies, whoever they may be, to really, and to, to really look at its cost structure, and how much they're, they're going to be charging, not just the, the, the employees and the retirees, but how much they're going to be charging for their services. And that if, you know, the amounts that they're going to have to rebate or return as a result of them overprojecting, maybe this body would, you know, can, can have a discussion and consideration of being able to say, okay, well, if, you know, at the end of the year when you rebate the money, there's, there's interest tax to that. These are all the discussions that could be had. You know, Madam Speaker, a lot of this stuff comes as a result of the, of the, of the, of the current healthcare act that the, the whole nation has to follow. There's still a lot of questions with regards to, you know, whether or not things are applicable to, to Guam or even to, to many other jurisdictions for that matter. So this is still a learning process. But then in this process too, this gives us an opportunity to look at where we've been, the way, you know, we've been providing health insurance, not just for our employees in Gov Guam, but in, in the private sector. And I appreciate a lot of these discussions, but I don't think that this process is prudent. You don't change the rules of the game in the middle of the game. You don't go into the fourth quarter of a football, tackle football game and says, okay, for the fourth quarter, now we're going to change and we're going to play flat football. Or for that matter, you don't say that, okay, for the second half of the, of the football game, we're going to be playing it on a baseball field, and we're going to play baseball now. So I bring these concerns. I appreciate, you know, the offer that I'm, and what is, what is provided here in this bill. My issue is to whether or not, is this the time, the appropriate time to me, to do this? And in this time, what are those other uncertainties that we're, you know, if we're going to wait until this, you know, appeals process is done, what if this appeals process takes longer than expected? In the meantime, what happens to health insurance for, for, for government employees and the retirees? Is this a process that can be looked at for next, starting next term? And based on, you know, again, and maybe this is a technical correction that could be made, but is this process just for the fiscal year 2013? be made, but is this process just for the fiscal year 2013 contract? What happens to future contracts? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for providing me this opportunity, and I'll continue to listen to the discussions.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Yama Shida, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for giving me an opportunity to address Bill 513, an act to provide health insurance to government of Guam employees and retirees for fiscal year 2013. Madam Speaker, this past Sunday, I actually spent about four hours reading and rereading and reading and rereading and trying to process everything. I certainly appreciated the joint caucus that was held last week, and it helped me bring to life comments and thoughts on the floor, and certainly, as has been cited by previous speakers already, there isn't anybody in this hall that doesn't take this issue seriously. With all of this being said, I would like to present some of the thoughts that I have concluded this past weekend. Originally, Madam Speaker, I supported 513 as a proponent of choice. As I better understand the process, choices provided through the procurement process, where the doors are open for interested parties, and where standards need to be met to ensure that wanted, reliable, dependable supports and services are provided at competitive, fair rates to the people, the government, and the industry. In their testimony, the Net Care, Take Care, Island Home Insurance, the President, the Planet Administrator, the Chief Operating Officer, they each described in their testimony, and verbally, I was at the public hearing, that the procurement process is really a key stumbling block to effective, efficient selection and negotiations. They also raised that the issues of transparency, structure, the proposed invitation to bid, clarification, that promotes rules around qualification process, determination of rates and marketing rules are all aspects that really should be studied and addressed. Originally, Madam Speaker, I supported 513 because I was concerned that there is no urgency placed on health insurance. And as I listened, as I received the phone calls, the email, the visits, I believe there is urgency all around. The procurement process for this particular aspect, health and dental insurance, needs to be improved, and everyone is saying that. Stakeholders and industry leaders need to sit and determine what that improvement looks like, to include wellness programs and the possibility of a self-funded structure. As several have testified, a process that will impact long-term improvement needs to be facilitated. As well, I received information that tells me I really need to understand more about the consequences of Bill 513 on items such as adverse selection. Again, as reiterated by previous speakers, there is action in process relative to the procurement of health and dental insurance. This quote-unquote "stay," I think, should be allowed to play out before, before any kind of legislation is passed. Madam Speaker, I certainly think that, I just really believe that further deliberation is needed on this issue. The urgency and the rush is understood for a variety of reasons, and Madam Speaker, I want you to know that I am particularly sensitive to this issue today because... Because today marks my dad's 20th death anniversary. We had to fly him out by the five seats that many families do, only to go to Hawaii, to find out his heart was already 90% dead, and only to fly the rest of us out so that we can be at his deathbed. That was 20 years ago, Madam Speaker. Today, we all have stakeholders coming into our offices, saying, "You have to help us with our health care." We all talk about wellness and prevention, and we all know somebody who's had to go somewhere to get the kind of attention that they need, and we all, I just went to my office, I must have 20 letters asking for medical support. Something is really wrong. And yet, the government invests millions upon millions upon millions into health I do not believe 513 is going to address the concerns that are around all of us. I do not believe that we need to get on an airplane to get the kind of attention that needs so that we can live a little bit longer. The fix is serious, the fix needs to be addressed by the industry and the stakeholders. Everybody needs to sit down and address what's going on and what's not going on, and how do we fix this. I certainly appreciate the sponsors' attempt to say this is a serious issue, because it is, but I do not believe that 513 is addressing it in the manner that we really do, thank you, Tom, that we really do need. Madam Speaker, as everybody knows, I was an original sponsor of this, co-sponsor of this measure, and I was really, I was really honored when Speaker Ben actually came in my office. Again, though, Madam Speaker, please understand that as I thought more and more about it, and as I stood and listened to a variety of community leaders, industry representatives, and as I thought more about it, as I took the time to read the studies, I've determined that I cannot stand in support of 513 because I do not believe it is going to resolve the health issues as I see them for our families on this island right now. I read the standing rules. The standing rule said that if you are going to request for a removal of your name as sponsorship, you shall put it in writing and send it to the clerk, and I did that on Saturday. And then I was advised this morning that I have to make that motion on the floor, so I, with deep respect, Madam Speaker, I am now making that motion to remove my name as a, as a co-sponsor. Thank you very much.
On the motion to remove Senator Medini's name as a co-sponsor, no objections, order. On the motion, recognize Senator Medini.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I wanted to extend my appreciation to the author of Bill 51331. I was very honored when he visited my office and sat down with me and shared with me his, the intent of the bill, and expressed his, his deep concern in addressing the financial woes and, of course, insurance, insurance issues that, that are currently still in litigation, although he did explain further where we're at today. And since then, there, I've received, and this is, you know, no secret to anyone, feedback from, from various constituencies, both businesses and, and private, and personal responses. We've also, and I also, by the way, was at the public hearing, received testimonies. And one of the things that, that jumped out at me, and I had shared it with some of my colleagues, is that although we did have one company who testified in opposition, those that did support, when I went through all their letters and their testimonies, one thing that really jumped out at me was their con, was, and it was, was really jumping out at me in various parts of their letters, is the issue of procurement. And we hear that constantly. I also know, I also understand that negotiations, negotiations are still in process, or in various motion throughout the litigation process, and I'm no expert, but I do know that there is that process in place. I do understand also that this bill does create a certain tight timelines that various testimonies have, have expressed concerns about. And although previous speaker did say that it's very simple, it is not. There's a lot, it's very complex. Many of us here are not experts in the insurance field. There's terms that I, that have been thrown at me, adverse selection, that I want to, you know, I still need time to even explore what that means. And so, moving further, moving further, I'd like to recommend that, that we should explore a non, or have a non-partisan professional be involved in the process, serve as a consultant to avoid these kind of issues, and also explore the proposals that are introduced in, in Bill 51331. Focus on the savings, that is the intent, stay focused on, and I think, most importantly, stay focused on improving the procurement process. This is, this issue is bigger than what's presented here. It is, it is procurement. We constantly hear about the, the patterns of protest, and I think that's something that we really need to hone in on. But even in that process, we should review the ideas that was presented in 51331. So, after careful review, the bottom line is that although at the beginning, I did support the proposal, Bill 51331, did put my name on it, and I do appreciate the author, but at this point, I don't believe we should impede in the process, the current procurement process that's now ongoing, and we do have to focus on improving our service to our constituents, to our GovGuam employees, and also to all, to all individuals in the private, in the private industry as far as health care is concerned. And I understand it's subject to House rules that a written request for sponsorship removal is required, and I did that this weekend. But I also understand that I would need to move that on the floor, so I would like to move for the removal of my name on sponsorship of Bill 51331, and again, to extend my appreciation to the author, and to, to all the others who did support it and have their certain positions for Bill 51331. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to have Senator Medini remove her name as a co-sponsor to Bill 513, hearing objections, order. Does anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Vice Speaker, and then I have Senator Duñez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 513. I know that it is a procurement act, and I know that there's been a request by the Procurement Council to withhold any more procurement provisions. But as it relates to health insurance, Madam Speaker, I think we have held off long enough. The administration received $1 million a couple of years ago to look at health exchanges. Every time we've had a discussion or roundtable, we've not been able to get a definitive, definitive answer as to whether or not they have begun the process, whether they're going to do it, whether they're going to opt in or out. I, I'm still trying to get an answer. Last week, in recognition of the fact that our, the health premiums, health insurance premiums on Guam are so high, the Department of Health and Human Services provided $2 million to the administration to study the reasons for health insurance premiums being so high in Guam. How they're going to do that, and if they're going to do that, I, I don't know if we can just sit and wait and wait and wait. And so, I think at this point, kickstarting it with 513 may be the only way that we're going to be able to get something that is, is even akin to the federal employees' health benefits, and so I rise in support of it, and I, I hope the administration utilizes the $3 million they've now received from the federal government to, one, look into the health exchanges, and, two, determine why it is that our health insurance premiums are so high, so that we can provide health insurance to our people at a reasonable cost. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, Senator Duñez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to discuss the merits of Bill 513-31 as introduced. Madam Speaker, I would like to start by expressing my desire for myself and other members of this body to have other measures heard in this session. I am currently drafting a letter to you specifically with Bill 491 to be held in this session, as well as the Rules Chair to be placed on with your concurrence of a committee report, so I ask for that courtesy, Madam Speaker.
Your statement is not germane to the subject, so please...
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
...to the subject of 513.
Sure. Madam Speaker, I sat and listened to the testimony that was provided by several members of the body earlier, and I have to say that I think that a good deal of the concerns were addressed, at least to my satisfaction, in terms of the questions that were brought up on the urgency of the requirement of this bill at, at this time. First of all, Madam Speaker, I listened to the issues proffered about the fact that the cash is bleeding because of the current situation that we just experienced whereby I saw over the last 10 days, the refunds go out quite quickly in terms of the cash that was collected in overpayments on insurance. Madam Speaker, I've also been privileged to be a director for eight years in the executive branch, and privileged to be part of the allotment schedule and releases, whereby, even if this pending situation of the millions of dollars that we expend on a quarterly, sometimes daily basis within this government, Madam Speaker, that is something, even as one of the retiring speakers said, that can be adjusted in the fourth quarter of any given fiscal year. So, any savings to be realized to this government can be adjusted as we go through the fiscal year and not hamper the operations over, or the overall budget ceiling of this government, Madam Speaker. As a matter of fact, I had the privilege over the weekend to talk to a retiree, an individual that actually was responsible for this entire government for several years, managing the budget at the chief executive level. And his main concern with this particular piece of legislation, Madam Speaker, and the reason why I concur with my colleagues who have expressed caution, understanding the good intent, was he himself and many others, the retirees. And the reason why he expressed that concern very deeply, Madam Speaker, was because he had seen scenarios before whereby insurance plans and insurance negotiations contained a cherry picking, if you will, or a grouping, and it was always a concern sometimes on how you would push forward the blend of current employees and retirees, and how that would work out to the best possible opportunity for the best rates available based on usage for the entire population of the government of Guam seeking that insurance. And the concern was, in the event that even though this program on its face looks very favorable, in the event the plans were structured such that it was loaded up with certain carriers, with the healthy and those having very low utilization of health care, that it could be just the opposite. If one company, perhaps two companies, were loaded with those because of the way the plans were structured and how the migration happened, that those companies could no longer afford to be in business because of the fact that they were carrying the highest utilizers within their plan. Now, it's not to say that this scenario is inevitable at any, any point, Madam Speaker, but just the possibility, in its existence, to me, gives me pause to say, "Let's work on this a little bit more. Let's bring everybody to the table many times again to discuss this issue and see if this is the right way to go forward." Madam Speaker, there was discussion on the purpose of this bill because of protests. We sat in this hall, and even prior to getting to this hall, we sat in that public hearing room for hours and days to try to expend $60 million in Arrow funds that has been sitting in the bank for years, while we hear of all the issues with our schools on a daily basis. So, we passed legislation once again to narrow the window on the possibility of protests. We stepped in, we acted, and just 10 days ago, plus or minus, the governor of Guam was finally granted his request for an extension once again for Arrow funding to be expended. My point being, if it's really the protests that we're trying to deal with here and that grind, as we've talked about, many people have talked about on this floor, the grind of the process and procurement that once and for all, this government's going to have to address, I don't even believe this will answer that question, Madam Speaker. And from what I hear, and from what the speculation has been, and, and many of the media lately, is, is a multitude of lawsuits possibly based on changing the rules in the middle of the game. And, and, and we have to take that seriously, because truthfully, there is due process happening at this time. at this time. And an RFP that should be ready in a matter of days now that this fiscal year has commenced should allow to move forward. And the provisions in law for our GovGuam employees to be covered are there to protect our people and to protect the process. Madam Speaker, once again, I think it's important that our people realize that there is a current protest underway that more than likely will inevitably end up in court. I think that this body should act responsibly and not be involved in stopping due process. Madam Speaker, in closing, I will say that for the last 15 to 16 months, it's been my pleasure to listen on this floor and to hear many wise comments and many wise advice and sage advice that has been issued by members of this body with many more years' experience than myself. And I will say, one of them that stood out to me most was the wisdom that was imparted on several of our members, one in particular. When moving on measures and even doing things in your own life, hurry, but don't rush. And Madam Speaker, if inevitably we stop due process, we're not only rushing after hurrying, but we're opening the door to being a lawmaking body that actually breaks the law. And for that reason, Madam Speaker, I cannot in good conscience support this bill at this time without more deliberation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill 513, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Gutierrez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill. I think this bill is needed. The confusion that has resulted from the current solicitation for bids for health insurance for GovGuam retirees and active members requires us to act. A prolonged continuation of a temporary agreement is not in the interests of the retirees or the active members of the fund covered by health insurance solicited by the government of Guam. I'm not afraid to change, Madam Speaker. I see resistance to change. I receive resistance to change by some interests in our community that would like to leave things the way they are and continue a system that does not work in the best interests of those to be covered by the government's procurement of insurance. People need to have a choice. They shouldn't be forced to be covered by just one entity if there are other options available. This bill provides for other options. In my opinion, let those companies that are reputable, that meet the criteria, set out in current law, and then this bill compete to cover our retirees and our active personnel. Years ago, we had a lot of choices, and the employees and the retirees chose to go and to be covered by those companies that best met their interests. I thought that we are committed to competition in this industry. I know I am. I introduced a bill a number of years ago that became law that requires competition in the industry. This new bill simply reinforces that intent, and I am pleased to support it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, I recognize Senator Tony Anda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I sat here and I listened to my colleague speak on Bill 513, it made me sit here and wonder really whether, really, we should be in committee of the whole so that we can get the answers that we are all seeking. Everyone seems to have an answer or a question as to how we should move forward with this bill. I've read the bill and I've looked at the legislative intent, and even I myself had questions. You know, on one section here, it says that the Office of Finance and Budget utilized the health insurance industry standard methodologies and tools with the most recent 12 months of claims data and trend, which resulted in total required premiums of $65 million. But then on the next page, if you look at it, with the federal side, not only do they have contract specialists, the Office of Personal Management, they have contract specialists and actuaries. So, is this really what it's going to cost us, and is this really what we're going to be able to save with the $8.3 million? Those are the questions that I have, and those are the questions that I'm not sure can be answered in this body. So I think that we really need to take a step back and wonder whether we really should be in the committee of the whole so that we can get our questions answered, so that we may vote on this legislation accordingly. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, there being none. Speaker Bengalina, would you like to close?
Thank you, and since this is my seat, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank all of my colleagues for taking the time to address some of their concerns, articulate them, so that we can understand exactly where they're at. And maybe I'd like to kind of go back and, you know, just provide my perspective in terms of formulating this bill and working through it. You know, the most recent one, of course, by my retiring colleague, is this what it's really going to cost us? Well, if it doesn't cost us this, then we don't move forward. But what's even more important is that what it's going to cost us in this bill is less than what it's costing us now. So, it doesn't matter whether what it's going to cost us, it's going to cost us less than what we're paying now. It's going to cost the employees less, it's going to cost the retirees less, it's going to put more money in the pocket, it's going to cost the taxpayers less than what we're doing now. So if you want to continue and ask the question of, I'm concerned whether this is the right price or the wrong price, we already know that the price we're paying today is the wrong price. It's too much. We know that. And if you don't want to admit that, then don't admit it. But we know. Why? Because we're getting money back. A year and a half later, with no interest. So, the question, I'm very comfortable that the way that this bill has been put in place, that it's going to be an improvement to the taxpayer, to the employee, to the retiree, and to their families, Madam Speaker, in terms of money available to them to meet other needs that can be contributed by the savings that they can realize if this moves forward. Madam Speaker, with the issue of that, you know, we're rushing. Madam Speaker, this bill ensures that if we move forward with a new procurement, we won't have to rush because we know what it's going to be. We know what the requirements for the issuance of a new procurement. We don't have to plan, are we going to go back to the RFP, or are we going to go back to this? We know this is the process, it's a simple process, there are things that got to be prepared, and people can begin working on it. The timeframes are compressed, yes, but everybody has been involved in this thing, and all the issues remain, the issues with regards to what kind of benefits, the pricing, you know, and so forth, is there already. The contract, they're working on a contract. So, this ensures that we don't have to rush, you know? The late John Wooden, I think from where the quote was paraphrased, is, be quick, but don't hurry. We need to be quick on this. And by being quick on this, we can ensure that the people who have to do the work don't have to rush because they will know what process we're going to follow once the protests are resolved. Again, I know there's concerns, but we're not taking that. Whether we go back to an RFP, we still have to wait until the protest is resolved. But that RFP is the road that we have taken over the last three years, five years, that have seen us being overcharged for health insurance with no competition and no choice for the employee. That's the road we're going to go if we don't do this. Is that where you want to go? I don't. I think there's an alternate route that we want to look at, and this is the alternate route, that takes us away from a road that has been full of potholes of protest, overpayment, no choice, to one that says, we're going to go with a road that fills some of those potholes, not all, you can never, never moot all possible protests, but it fills those holes that we know exist in that other road. This road will not have those holes. We'll fill them up, we give them a choice, we save money for the consumer and the retirees, and we save money, more importantly, to the taxpayer who's paying the bill. We know the other way continues to have the taxpayer pay for something we know we don't have to pay for based upon how the process, that system, has worked in the past. So we're being quick so people don't have to hurry, Madam Speaker. We know, we know that. Madam Speaker, the issue of adverse selection and loading up and so forth, we understand that's a problem, and most of us that have had experience in the health field know that. And as pointed out by the professionals in the industry, it is a concern, and of course it is. But they also note that the Lewis and Ellis study that they all quoted on to justify continuing on this process, on this other alternative, said that what you need to do to fix adverse selection, which has caused the exit of other insurance companies from the GovGuam health insurance program, is the issue of differing benefits. When somebody is covering dialysis and the other person's not, or they're covering it at 80/20 and the other person says 50/50, the one who needs dialysis, which is very expensive care, is going to go to the one that covers it 80/20. The problem there is that when they go to the one that is covering it 80/20, the premium that that 80/20 patient is being paid for, that health insurance company, is the same premium that's being given to the person that's using, that's getting coverage at 50/50/50. So, we restructure, and where were these differences occurring? It was occurring in the health care utilization of the retiree population. So they said, you need to restructure your contribution and the premium rate for those that utilize health care on a larger scale than those that don't. And so that's what we did. This body responded to that study and restructured the contribution of the premium so that now those that utilize greater resources in health care, costing more, that the insurance company that ensures them gets a higher premium for that to make up for the fact that they use more health care. That population is rated to pay more because they use more health care. So we fixed that problem on adverse selection. The second issue with regards to adverse selection, Madam Speaker, according to the study, was the differing benefits. And so, how do we fix that? We now just have one set of benefits, two different health plans, but one set of benefits in each of the health plan, and everybody that bids is bidding on the same benefit schedule. So now, you don't have somebody going 80/20 for dialysis because the other person is covering dialysis at 80/20 as well. So you remove elements of adverse selection by having a uniform benefit schedule. So we solved that problem on adverse selection. And I know this may not be easily apparent to some of us, but, you know, it's just, I'm old and I've worked in different places in my life, and I've been fortunate that one of those places that I've had an opportunity to work in my life is the health care field. And so I am familiar with this. And it's just, again, it's just because that's where my life has been over the years. And there's no reason why anybody whose life, you know, hasn't been in that era should have to know this. Hell, if I didn't have to learn this, I wouldn't have. I would have gone and learned, you know, piano instead. But that was my job to know this thing. And so I'm giving the benefit of some of the issues that are being raised by things that I had to learn in my life because that was my job. And I agree with the Lewis and Ellis study that this was a problem, and this is one way of mitigating and minimizing the issue of adverse selection. And I think we've seen some of that issue, Madam Speaker. The thing is, it happened after everybody exited the market. So we fixed the problem, we gave them more health care for the utilization of that retiree group, and gave them more money. We're just giving them too much because there's no competition. They can price it at any way they want. Because you don't even, in the current RFP process, you don't even begin to talk price till you're number one, till you're the first guy in place, they don't even talk price. I can put into the RFP process today, Madam Speaker, I can submit a bid today, four of us, or anybody, can submit a bid today where the guy that bids $77 million is rated the highest, and we're going to work with him, and if we can agree, I don't even have to talk to the guy who's offering me 60. That's what we have today. That's the process we want to go back to. That says we're bidding on the same schedule of benefits. I can give you that for 60 million, and the guy that bids 77 is rated number one, and we just go in there, and if he says 72, I can accept that 72 without even talking to the guy that's offering 60. That's the process today. That's what we're trying to get away from. But no, we want to go back to that. I say we don't go back to that. We talk to the guy that's offering 60 and say, hey, man, that's really much better than 72, you know? But that's the way it is now, Madam Speaker, and that's what we got to get away from. We got to get away from that kind of stuff because the rating to see who gets to go first is subjective, so subjective that price doesn't ever enter it. Even though both proposers are providing and have been qualified by the federal health employees with all the actuaries and all the contract specialists, they looked at the same people, Madam Speaker, the same company, and they said, come because you are good, you offer your benefits or your services to our employees, you know? We say, no, you stay there until we finish with this guy. And only if this guy gets so unreasonable do we even talk to you, who the federal government says you are financially sound, you can provide this and so forth, for $10 million or $12 million left, no, we're not even going to talk to you because this is the way we want to go right now with all that subjectivity in place, Madam Speaker. That's what we're trying to avoid, Madam Speaker. And I think Bill 513 takes us closer to that rather than this. And I think this process is a better process. It's less subjective, it's price-driven, but it also is consumer-driven, Madam Speaker. Consumer-driven in being given a choice, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we all, we're hearing this, oh my God, we're going to change the rules of the game or in the middle of the game. No, 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 Madam Speaker, the game's over. The GovGuam Health Insurance Committee has already said, game is over. We're going to start a new game. That's where we're at now. Now, the guy who was in the game said, no, I don't agree with you that the game is over. I think we should continue playing. I think we should continue playing. And so he goes, I'm gonna ask the OPA that we continue this game. But the government of Guam, the Attorney General, the Gov. Guam Health Negotiating Committee said, no, the game is over. And we're gonna go to the OPA and we're saying, we made the right decision in saying the game is over, new game. So, we win the protest. The Attorney General's very confident in their advice to the negotiating committee that, hey, new game, we're gonna win this, game is over. So we're saying now, game is over, OPA, let's say OPA says game is over. New game, what game do you want to play? You want to play a game that now says only one guy that the employees can choose from? Or three or four guys that the employees can choose from? Which game do you want to play? New game, a new game that says we're gonna go with unsure rules and regulations because there was another protest in the beginning that says, hey, no rules and regulations there. Or a game that says, here are the process you go through, very clear, fairly simple, straightforward. No, I'm biased, let's do it this way, saving money, giving a choice. That's the game, which game do you want to play? That game or this game? The OPA says game over. Do you want to play a game that says you're gonna go through that same process now? That says two people, both eminently qualified? Hell, one of them is like a $10 billion company, or maybe $60 billion company. And he's saying, I'm gonna give you healthcare services for whatever, less than what you're paying now, and the other guy's saying, no, I get to go first. And I, as long as I can convince them that 77 million, 75 million is reasonable, which they did, they did the last time. That was it, only one guy got to talk price. And what did we find out? That price was too high, for the last three years we found out. We've had to take money back from them. They didn't give it willingly, we had to take it. The only way we could take it was Obamacare. No matter how you criticize Obamacare, it says take back what you do not use to pay for the healthcare of your employees after the companies make a reasonable profit and retention. Not no profit, not no retention, reasonable profit and retention of 15%. That's what Obamacare did. And what did it mean for us? It meant $8 million in checks going last year for things that we paid over a year and a half ago with no interest on it. Is that the game you want to play? Or do you want to play this game that says, no, we're not gonna pay you that much. This is what we have based upon the costs that we know have been true, have been out there, that you provided to us, and this is what it should cost. And you know what, man? There's a provision in our laws that allow them that if this price is too low, that in the next cycle, they can make it up. So we can pay them if we underpay them six months from now. Why is it that we want to ensure that they pay us back when we overcharge? Let's just say that, you know, we underpriced this thing and they said, okay. And they find out, oh my God, well, they can recover that price below the 15% in their next thing so that we pay them back for the healthcare they paid for us. Hey, at least let's do this for two years so that we're even. This year, you overpay us, and we'll pay you back next year, next time. This year, we'll overpay you, and then you'll give it back to us. No, it's a one-way street. We get to overpay them forever and then have them give it back to us. Why don't we underpay them one year, and then we'll overpay them the year after? How about that? Wouldn't that be fair? Isn't that the same thing of the same side of a different coin? And it's good for them, but bad for us? Madam Speaker, once again, I truly understand the hesitancy of some of these issues that are being raised by my colleagues and how it's costing them some deep consternation on this thing. But if we are worried about what game are we gonna play and changing the rules in the middle of the game, we don't go forward with this game until they said, yes, a new game. And what game do you want to play? I want to play a game that ensures that our employees and retirees have a choice. One that puts money back in their pocket and one that saves the public money, Madam Speaker, because they pay for the bill in the end. And as a bonus, it helps the governor in his cash management. Because why do you want to take $7 million of overpayments this year and give it to somebody else to hold it? Maybe that's what the 15% reserve is so we can give, make sure they have the cash. Make sure we pay 100%. Are we holding a 15% reserve on health insurance premiums? Hell, no. Can guarantee you, we're gonna pay them 100% of the premium, Madam Speaker. There's gonna be no 15% reserve there. We're gonna pay them 100% of the premium, Madam Speaker. And we know that that's too much based upon the last three years' experience and based upon the calculations that have been performed that have been close to the accurate numbers that we've seen in this projection, Madam Speaker. Even as the retiring speaker from Committee on Rules, even the governor said, hey, I think we're gonna overpay by seven, so let's make sure, you know, that we recognize that in the budget. He put in there that they will expect that we will get a return of $7 million for overpayment. He put it in the budget, he endorsed it. He could have easily said, no, we're gonna negotiate a contract where there's zero rebate because we got the right price, but nope. So Madam Speaker, I once again ask for my colleagues' consideration. And hopefully, Madam Speaker, this bill does not harm anybody or anything, Madam Speaker. Everybody said they welcome competition, they want to participate, and that they're not afraid of competition. Well, let's have a process that it ensure that we maximize the opportunity for that competition and maximize the savings to our people, to our government, to our retirees, and to the taxpayers of Guam. So thank you very much, and this is my speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment here with no name, but I'm not sure.
Madam Speaker, and I'd like to just amend Section 5. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, based upon the conversations we had this morning with the Attorney General as well as what we hear here, which is some of the same concerns, I have a couple of amendments. And the first one I'd like to present, Madam Speaker, is to amend Section 5 to read increase of prospective offers. It would add, Madam Speaker, the insurance commissioner to the people that would be involved in answering the technical questions and the, of the prospective offers regarding the interpretation and the technical details of the ITB at a pre-bid conference meeting exactly five days of the issuance to bid is promulgated. Madam Speaker, we said that, you know, they don't have anybody to, the experts and so forth. Well, we have the insurance commissioner's office, Madam Speaker, and that office is charged with monitoring, accepting the filings of the health insurance companies on Guam. That assures that they are, number one, reputable. Number two, that the product that they sell and the cost of that product will be able to be effectively paid for by the resources of the company that is selling that product. And so these are some of the issues with regards to ensuring that those that are bid are sound financially, have a good track record, have met their obligations under the products that they sell. And so, this is the office that is dealing with insurance. And so, we would add that expertise within the government of Guam to the process of responding to increase during the pre-bid conference, Madam Speaker. And so it would, again, add the insurance commissioner in addition to the chief procurement officer in responding to those technical questions, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, no objections?
Madam Speaker, I just have two other amendments, and that's being copied right now, Madam Speaker. Just a short recess. That's correct.
Speaker Penglinen, you recognize an amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the second amendment I have is a one-page amendment, and it's to amend Section 2B. And this was just raised, this issue was raised, and we thought it prudent to go ahead and respond to that issue by deleting a portion of that. And that is in reference to the current procurement process, Madam Speaker. And so what we're saying in amending the language, Madam Speaker, is that, to be clear, that we're not trying to affect this current solicitation. We're just saying that any solicitation for Guam Health Insurance Plan for FY 2013 Medical and Dental Insurance shall not be reissued except by an ITB invitation to bid pursuant to the provisions of this act. So rather than referencing the current process that, an RFP that is under protest, we're just saying that that's an issue that's out there under protest. It's that when that new game starts, when the new game starts, if it starts because of the resolution of that, that RFP, that the game shall be pursuant to this act under the rules set out in this act. So it does separate the two much more clearly than we, than it was under that referencing to the old, or to the current RFP under protest. So I move to make that deletion, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment? Okay, we'll take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator Frank Blom, so you recognize on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I can see where the author, and I appreciate him as far as the concern that I brought up earlier, maybe that's what he's trying to address. The concern here, though, is all we did was basically took out the adjectives. We put the adjectives back in, or you take them out, it's still the same. Because now, where it said "any previous procurement solicitation," now it just says "any solicitations." It could be previous, it could be, it could be anything. It could be interpreted as any, okay? Which includes the documents provided in the procurement process shall not be reissued. All we did was remove the adjectives. But if you read it here, it says "any solicitations." And "any" means everything. So, we're back to square one with this. And so, I think that within the discussions that we're having here, I know, and I'm trying, you know, where we want to be able to basically not hold, you know, which documents or which solicitations can be included, by continuing to say "any," it still, it can be interpreted as everything, to include. So, that's the concern I have here.
On the amendment, Senator Duennius, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the amendment. Madam Speaker, in many of the discussions, at the risk of, yes, maybe sounding as though this is the practice of law by questioning lawmaking, I guess I'll do it, because we've got plenty of lawyers in the room. My problem with the amendment as proffered, Madam Speaker, is, as I said during my testimony earlier, there is an ongoing protest, that is, with the AG, that could result in the issuance or declaration that that negotiation process is valid and could be upheld. So, there is inherent, or could be interpreted inherent, process being put in place by saying "any," solicitations for GHIP-FY 2013 Medical and Dental shall not be reissued except by ITB pursuant to the provisions of this act. So, I'll speculate once again, couldn't a lawyer then, based on this law, if it was passed, turn around and say, "Okay, the OPA upheld the decision. That RFP process was okay. Go to the award phase and let everybody go move forward." But this law now says you cannot issue, or shall not be reissued. It's forcing the ITB process, in my simple reading. So, for that reason, Madam Speaker, I'm going to go ahead and object to this amendment.
On the amendment? We will then take a lunch recess, and we'll be back at 2:00 this afternoon.